Mail, the message is that current news, three of the court administrators. Any member of this body believes that this meeting is being held in violation of the open public meeting, and please attribute it this time and specify the reasons supporting your belief that the notice is improper. Hearing none, we move on to the next item. Um, roll call. No, I just plugged the link.
I believe this is the light in the United States of America. In tribute of our Christian saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with a King and justice for all.
Do you want to add to this morning?
Yes, you do.
Prior to the roll call?
I'm gonna crash my chair.
Yeah, exactly.
Don't you up for meeting, what's what happened?
I forgive the chair. Hold on. Let me get a copy of the, oh. I say amen.
I, Bernard Novato.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of planning board member.
Perform all the duties of office of planning board member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the state.
And will bear true faith and allegiance to the state.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people. I want to thank you all for your confidence in looking at your chairman. And I realize something because I was. Are you having any years now? Very cool, everybody. Well, sir. Okay, um, roll call.
Chairman Novato.
Here.
Ms. Wildensky here. Mayor Sullivan. Councilman Brum.
Here.
Ms. Adair.
Here.
Mr. Aiken's advised he would be absent. Mr. Crasco.
Here.
Mr. Kresty.
Here.
Mr. Cleveland.
Here.
Mr. Addicks is absent. Ms. Werner.
Here.
Okay, uh, approval of a minutes for January eleventh, twenty twenty three.
Some second.
And just the regarding the exact exception minutes, um, we shouldn't be approving those until the reason for.
Past.
You said the exception is no longer in place, which is, so we should just be approving the regular minutes.
Okay.
Chairman Novato.
I understand.
Ms. Wildensky, yes. Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilman Brum.
Yes.
Ms. Adair.
Yes.
Mr. Crasco.
Yes.
Mr. Kresty.
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland.
Yes.
Ms. Werner.
I understand.
Okay, I'm gonna switch the agenda around a little bit so that, uh, our applicant doesn't have to sit through all of the other stuff. So we'll hear the concept review for forty one West High next.
Yeah, just have a motion to amend the agenda to move up, uh, the concept review prior to the resolution.
Hold on. Sir.
Uh, we do all pay. All payers?
Aye.
Post.
Okay. On up.
Hi.
Hi.
Right, hi, um, I'm Ellis Selleher, and myself and my husband, Aiden Quinn, uh, have put this proposal in front of you regarding, uh, my great-great-grandfather's house at forty one West High Street. Um, this is a personal project in the sense that, uh, it was built in eighteen ninety-five by a great-great-grandfather who was one of the founding members of the Somerset House etcetera. Uh, and it has remained in the family, uh, to this day, um, most recently held by my grandfather, who he lost last week. Um, still town. Um, the proposal is, um, is one that, uh, is, is a long time coming, I think, for, for this site. I don't know if you have, uh, images of the house in front of you and the stable house as well. Um, it's a beautiful home, uh, that has succeeded into benign neglect these past couple decades. And we very much like the chance to bring it back to its former glory. Um, obviously it's personal because I'll be the fifth generation, uh, handling the house and I want to do so. Uh, I want to do it, it's, it's, it's just due. Uh, it, at the moment, um, the stable house in the back, uh, is, um, well, view of photos to see what it looks like. That stable house was built at the same time as the main house, uh, and was used by Dr. Flynn, uh, for his horse and carriage to drive around and see patients around town, also to ferry patients to and from Somerset Medical Center. Um, additionally, a pop of full family information that was passed down from family member to family member states that, that the, the livery stable that was also used, uh, by the first fireman, the first fire engine company that was situated on Maple Street. Um, I have a bag full of materials if you'd like additional information on that, there's a square historical detail. Um, so we want to take this stable and we want to make it look beautiful again, so I put it to use. Um, it was always a part of the town. Uh, it, it was used frequently by other doctors, by the firemen, uh, so they kept their horses properly safe. Um, and so we'd just like to, uh, bring it back to life, make it beautiful, make it useful. Um, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a lawyer, uh, but I am a art dealer. And that space can be transformed into a gallery, a beautiful, attractive cultural hub, um, without diminishing any of the aesthetics and the history behind it. And that's the, the gist of our, our proposal. I hope that gives you an idea of, um, what it is. I was told to go first and give you the family history as well as the, uh, kind of rundown. So a hundred and thirty years later, here I sit, uh, going back, you know, putting out a bracket my family's house. Don? Tom?
I need Tom to connect. You got any testimony?
Before we start, obviously, just to put it in context for both the board and applicant, um, you're here for a concept review so the board can listen to what it is you have to say.
Hmm.
Um, any comments of the board is merely, uh, advisory and, and, you know, uh, just their preliminary off the top comments. Um, and then the board wants an application for this for you for actual approval, then you take a look and release if it's necessary and correct. But obviously this is helpful both to give it to that, so I can keep the motion review and, uh, you know, it's like, nothing is binding, right? And, uh, until that.
Good evening, board. Um, I'm not sure if you guys have a preference, we're seven easy to either. And I have smaller handouts as well of exhibits. So one of them is the smaller, um, rendition of the plans that were submitted. And then the second one, I'll label as exhibit, I guess, or not really for conceptual.
Not really. Thanks.
Just let me know if I can stand here and scream or maybe get a microphone. Obviously it's picked up.
You're good there.
Alright, so the first plan that I'm just showing is fully submitted as part of the application package. Um, just wanted to give a quick overview of what's being proposed. Um, so the current site is approximately thirteen thousand square feet, um, all in the POR zone, which is professional office residential zone. Um, currently that the house or the main building is being utilized as a two-family with a professional office as well. Um, part of this proposal is, what we're proposing to do is to subdivide the lot. Uh, so there's the rear portion where the carriage house is, which is right off of an alleyway and municipal parking lot number one. Um, it's literally right on, on the property line, uh, with doors facing the municipal lot. So this made sense to, uh, hopefully subdivide the lot at that location. And part of that would also entail, um, a zone change for that lot, uh, part of the B one zone. And also that a little bit later in my next exhibit with the aerial and, and the vicinity, um, zones that are the vicinity of this site. I'll just focus on the front of the, um, of the lot, so I'll just go back one step to. So on the left side is existing conditions, um, it's colored so you can see what's, what's impervious, what's gravel, what's, what's pavement or hoop areas. Um, so as you can see, the majority of the site right now is, is either gravel or, or impervious coverage. Uh, the plan to the right is what's being proposed, um, conceptually. You can see we're proposing a lot more green space, that's the whole point of this. And there's the pink line that you can see kind of, I would say maybe two-thirds, if not more, uh, back on the property. That's where the subdivision line and zone change will occur. Um, the house structure located at forty one West High Street, facing West High Street will remain, uh, will obviously be, um, fixed up and will be utilized as a single-family residence, uh, so that will be a less intense use for that, that structure itself. And then the structure behind, as, um, Ms. Selleher had, had mentioned, will be utilized as an art gallery on the first floor and a conversion of the second floor into a one-bedroom apartment. Um, if the board and, and, and the board will be, uh, willing to change the zone for that, that back property, um, that property will be in conformance, um, it'll be employee performance, only with, um, variance that we have to grant it is frontage. Uh, so all lots have to front on a, uh, right-of-way or a street. Um, this does not technically, uh, front on a right-of-way, it faces on an alley in a municipal parking lot. Um, but I don't think that's a detriment for this lot since it's right adjacent to the municipal lot and that's where, um, most patrons would come in and out of this site and that's how it would be utilized. Uh, we are also proposing two parking stalls, uh, to the east of the building, um, tandem. That will be utilized for the apartments and that would satisfy the parking requirement for the apartment. And the art gallery, uh, if it is in the B one zone, would require, uh, no parking spaces. And again, it's not, uh, an intense use. Um, I would say art galleries will get a certain amount of pages per day, but, um, it's not like a, a typical retail store where you get people in and out all day. Um, in doing so, right now, the, the lot has eight pre-existing non-conformities on it. I'll just list them quickly, but, uh, lot frontage, lot width, front dirt setback, side dirt setback, side dirt setback, uh, both sides, um, impervious coverage, and then there's, um, two for accessory, uh, building rear yard and accessory building floor area. Uh, by opposing this, we would actually eliminate three of those pre-existing non-conformities. Uh, we eliminate the accessory buildings, the two for accessory buildings, since it's not on the lot anymore. And additionally, the impervious coverage will be reduced from, uh, about nineteen percent down to about thirty-three percent for the front property. If you want to take the whole property as a whole still not subdivided, it's still reduced to about forty-five percent, uh, which will gain performance with, uh, the zoning for POR zones. As I mentioned, there is the variance for the, uh, proposed lot to the south with no frontage on a right-of-way. And also there will be, uh, additional variance required for the lot on West High Street, and that will be for floor area ratio. Uh, reason for that is the lot got smaller, so the floor area now would be, uh, approximately twenty-nine point six percent where twenty-five percent is allowed. Again, that is technically a variance, but in the grand scheme of things, there's nothing changing as far as floor area. Um, either for the main building or the, the carriage house as far as square footage. Uh, that's pretty much the application in a nutshell. I mean, I'll just go to the next page just to show the, um, this is just an aerial exhibit, uh, with the property highlighted in yellow in the middle. Probably you'll see on your second page. But we do show the zoning, see, there's a black dash line that's the zone line. So this is the southwest corner is the B one zone, which is very adjacent to the proposed subdivision line. So it could easily be incorporated into that zone. It's not spot zoning where it's on the other side of town. Uh, we're trying to put a B one zone if it does, um, fit that area, has access to municipal lot. Um, I also drove by in that parking lot and there's businesses that, on West Main Street also have, um, alternate entrances along the back parking lot as well. So it won't be unusual for this, uh, use to have access to all municipal lot.
Question. Um, you now can utilize that alley. Who owns the alley?
Uh, the alley I believe is owned by the municipal, the alley that, that goes from, um.
From parking lot, that's, that's a municipal alley?
I believe that.
It's actually designated as Project Street.
No.
No, that's a never.
That's a different.
The lot. The other parking lot.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
John, I have one question for you. I think you showed the exterior, the exterior staircase.
Yes, so can you clarify that?
Yeah, I'm glad, okay.
Yeah, you're welcome. So on the west side of the building, if you look, there's a grand box and I call it out as I think stairs and, um, landing. So really it's not a, a staircase per se, it's more of a stoop or porch, uh, to come out of the apartment and then a couple steps down the grade. We, we didn't fully design it, so I showed, I think, four steps, it might be actually two or three steps.
How do you get to the second floor?
So from that, um, grade, uh.
Oh, that?
Yeah, that would go, go be a landing on the first corner and then stairs that go up.
Those are four stairs.
Correct. And then, um, if you're looking at that, if you're walking to the building to the right, it would be the main entrance for the alley.
Is, is there a walkway behind the building? So if they're parking, if the residents are parking on the other side, they're walking around to the other side to get up that entrance?
Uh, they could, yeah, we're, we'll all get away. Um, I don't think there's a full sidewalk right now that goes to that, that seat. Um, there is a concrete, um, pad or sidewalk currently there on the north side, that carriage house. Um, but that's something we're getting to explore when we actually do go into the site.
Is there a reason that you have, um, the subdivision line so close to that property? We have the twenty-five foot setback from the other one, looks like it's gonna get a key.
Yeah, so that's flexible as well. Um, really I was trying to make this as conforming as possible.
Gotcha.
Um, so that line is set to allow for ten thousand square feet, which is the minimum lot area for, uh, the POR zone.
Okay.
Um, could be good, but then it would trigger another variant.
How do you see access to the museum?
So. Yeah, so the access would be in this corner.
So that other paved area.
Yep.
I'm assuming it might have display out there also.
Is there, is there a fence there?
There is a municipal fence that ends, ends there.
Ends at the.
I had a comment about whether you could extend municipal lot spaces next to the eighty-eight, John, so you don't have backing up in that tight alleyway.
Yeah, well, something we're gonna look into, um, I think the tricky part there is there is a guy wire. So we have to see if the Q C U is actually willing to move that guy wire. And then also the way that that lot is configured, um, half the space would be actually on the municipal lot, half will be on the, uh, applicant's lot. And I don't know the mechanics of, really how that's possible.
It'd just be so, too much better for backing up because you back up into a travelway, not an alleyway. It's just tight. And I had a similar comment because I thought the doors were opening into the alleyway from the museum and they're not, they're to the, opening to the west. So there's get people coming in from the parking lot, get open. The alleyway's the restriction. We try to eliminate conflicts there with pedestrians and/or cars backing up into the alleyway.
Only thing I, I do want, you know, that we noticed is cars do park in there right now, um, and that will, um, is alleyway to east of the, of the building. And the alleyway actually ends pretty much right at the parking lot. There is an aisle here from the parking lot, so it is a little bit wider there than, than the smaller aisle, uh, alleyway.
And there's a speed hump there, courtesy of your grandfather. When we were putting the lot in, he had this door with a wall, it's built right in the alley. And he got my ear saying, cars gotta slow down, they're coming out right here. So that's why the, there's a speed hump right there, courtesy of your grandfather.
We'd be wanting to add another speed hump if we.
I'm just saying, it was noted as a problem for the adjoining property because the door went right into the alley. I'm just saying that, yes, that restriction of traffic there is real.
Do you envision signage for the museum?
Studio.
Gallery. Gallery. Currently, I'm neither, it's, it's a not, it's a for-profit and I'm not an artist, so I'm sort of the worst of those roles there. But, um, I do envision some signage, um, to be termed.
So if you could bring some kind of detail about how that sign would look, not necessarily the content, but, but how you're gonna lay it in.
Where it will be on the building.
Yeah, we're, we're just gonna be in the building directing people to the gallery entrance. When are you coming in with your full application?
Okay.
Just so the board knows, it's a conditional use in the zone and the conditions are a little different. It's all landscaping and you can't park in the front lawn yard, which I'm not sure where in the B one.
There is a front yard, yeah.
But it's a conditional use in the zone, I struggle to find the conditions.
Okay.
And I'm just telling you, the conditions were a little unusual being a landscaping and a parking location.
Okay. There, there are a number of variances here and I think you all know how I feel about the area variation, which I think should be completely disregarded. Um, so I don't see that as an issue. And I, the configuration of the lot, I don't see it's changing at all. You know, it's, it's, if anything, it's gonna improve. I like it.
I mean, I like the fact that it's a carriage house that's not gonna be removed, it's gonna be adapted. We've lost too many.
Yeah, yeah.
In town, and there are so few left now, and they are a treasure. And I was, I'm mortified there today and it, it, it needs a coat of paint, so.
Oh.
This, this will more than address that. You, you talked about, um, you talked about expanding the roof line. No, everything will stay the same.
Yes.
Yeah, I had an opportunity with, I, um, the architect, uh, Dan Rejebitz, and he said that my review of it wasn't quite true. He says it's gonna put more, that I'm gonna steal his thunder, but the roof line, it's not changing. And, John, I have a question, square footage, is that, Dan, are you gonna address the square footage of the, uh, the bedroom or the one-bedroom apartment?
I can do that, yep. You can just leave that there. Okay. Dan Rejebitz will be the, uh, that's me, I'll be the architect on the job. I've done the preliminary drawings, forty-four plans as well as elevations. As Ellis said, it's a historic building, I believe, built in the nineteenth century. And, um, I think someone on the board just said that we should be saving as many of these things as we can. Used to be a livery, used to be, um, let me put this up here. At some point in history, the building also housed horses that were used for one of the fire companies. So it would be a shame really to not have that building there. So I wanted to address some of the things that Michael has in his report, a few that are wrong. There's no exterior stair. Mike, there's no exterior stair. What you see in, what you see on the site plan is nothing more than a stoop, I guess, again, could it probably be two steps or something like that. So there were other questions as far as how are we getting to the second floor and so forth. This is the second floor, first floor. Municipal parking lot here, this is the, uh, high street. So what you would do if you were coming into the apartment, you would enter here, go up, kitchen, living area, bedroom here. If you're, and that is a separate entrance. Um, the gallery itself, we propose to have the main entry to the gallery on the west side. But, uh, also an entrance and exit on the east side. So I think that's up for discussion certainly, okay? Um, part of the apartment is also on the first floor. So as you come into the building to go to the second floor apartment, you can make a left-hand turn over your home office there. We do plan on, we don't, we do not plan on extending or breaking the footprint. We're gonna, that building is gonna be the same size when we get through with the proposal as it is now. We are, uh, hoping to extend a dormer in the back, which is now the front. A dormer in the front, a dormer in the back, and perhaps a skylight over the kitchen sink. Any questions on the plans?
Dan, the size of the apartment.
We got you, John. I think it's a little over eight hundred. It's over, I guess, shooting four and a half or one hundred.
Yep. Uh, eight hundred and twenty square.
Square footage for the gallery, after allowing you a minute, John.
Eleven seventy-nine.
Eleven seventy-nine, the gallery. The gallery will be, as it is now, a two-level gallery. My guess is that they used to bring the carriages in here. Perhaps there was a loft up above that would feed the horses. Maybe the horses came in here, the horses came in the other way, we're really not sure. But we were fairly sure that it did house horses for one of the fire companies. All right, any questions on the plan?
Uh, yes, the, um, first floor is gonna be all businesses, is there a way to completely separate the home office space?
Yes.
From?
This is the first floor. If you come in the, basically the residential entrance, you can make a left into that home office. But once you're in that home office, you cannot get out into the gallery. You can go outside from there or upstairs to the remainder.
There's no way into the gallery.
Right.
That's it.
Two separate entrances, two separate entrances.
Is that home office, and it's been a question for Ellis, that home office is gonna be related to the gallery or? We want a home office, to be completely frank, because it has been denied, uh, weathered the pandemic, uh, in a one-bedroom, uh, both working from home. We know what type of toll that took and, uh.
Sorry.
Yeah, I think there's something, uh, important, as you said, for having a separate space. So if we could offer that, we could go up naturally some of the space in the ground floor. Uh, we thought that was, uh, at the very least, a mercy given in two years of this kind of one-bedroom apartment.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Now, I couldn't hear anything John was saying or any of the comments about the main house. The main house now is, um, maybe a two-family with, uh, an office, but let's call it a two-family with an office. For that amount of square footage, it probably could hold even more. However, it's in a POR zone presently, and I think every member of the planning board knows that the POR zone is just not happening. So a lot, a lot of POR zone buildings are being converted to two-families or one-family, one-family. The main building, do you have photos of the main building?
No, we don't have pictures of it.
I'm assuming most of you know where it is.
Mm-hmm.
What it looks like.
Yep.
That's gonna be the primary residence. And, uh, then the carriage house will then be a rental space on the first floor with a gallery, business use on the, on the first floor. Okay, the, you, the, there are a few changes to the architecture, but they really are very minor. In order to get more headroom, I've increased the size of the dormer in the front, increased the size of the dormer in the back, and reduced the size of this dormer in order to allow us to get through there with a stair. Entrances, again, there was some talk about where the entrance and where it is was not an entrance. Um, as this elevation faces south and faces the driveway, alleyway, whatever we're calling that, this is just gonna. this is just going to be fixed glass on both sides. And we're going to make it with some kind of barn door configuration between the two. Siding, we're not really sure what kind of siding we're going to use. My guess and my hope would be clavbered. All right, um, you probably have photos of the existing carriage house, is that right?
Yes.
We're going to be changing the color of the roof from brown to charcoal probably. So it'll be a darker roof, it'll be a light kind of a building with some accents. Questions? Comments, questions, are we going in the right direction?
Yes.
So I, I just have, uh, questions. So once this is subdivided, they could conceivably sell off the back building in a lottery. So even though the big house is the main house now, it might just be the only house at some point in time. Okay? I mean, that's the only thing that I'd want a clarification on, which, but I'm all for this. I mean, I've talked to the board about this already, that I think they have to start utilizing around buildings all around town because they're sitting there wasting away and there's need for small apartments and, um, smaller buildings around it. So I'm all for this.
Yeah, and do you have a lot of planning of a new house?
Yes.
And should the council move the boundary line? I think the planning board will go with reasonable conditions for the subdivision move because of decent fairing, so we can address the issues about use and so forth. Uh, I lent the applicants a few months on site.
Right? One of, one of the things that, that we always consider is whether or not we're setting a precedent that is going to come back and bite us in the future. And in this case, I don't think we are, because what we're doing is preserving an old structure and doing it in a way that, that will enable it to exist.
And will encourage other property owners to.
Vindicate.
So, well, flattery is, you know, popular.
I, I am, am in favor of any variance in the law consequences.
And I assume that the, um, presentation of the council to expand that boundary line would happen first because then you'd be able to come aboard the planning board as opposed to.
Well, I think what, what would be a recommendation from the planning board, make his own change, should the board agree with this. Recommendation of yours, the council, council puts on the agenda, it'd be heard, and to get back to you, John, about parking, should the council do his own change and show the work with you, because I did that parking layout fifteen, ten, fifteen years ago. And we want to maximize all the blacktop and do it safe. Parking out there is much safer than doing it from the east side of the building.
I, I mean, I'm not sure where we are with that. Let me, uh, John may not, may understand it, but what you're suggesting, Mike, and we can refer to the site plan again, you're suggesting we park two cars here, correct, on the western side, but two cars there, we can park in a northerly and southerly direction. Are you suggesting the borough is going to give us some more property in order to park it a little better?
I'm suggesting that maybe we can have some flexibility in the space of the ADA spaces there.
Right.
I'd have to look at the whole parking arrangement should the borough want to do this. I think we can get, I'm suggesting two parallels and not stacked. If we get enough space where that handicap space goes away, because frankly, no one uses it, okay?
That's not the point of handicap space.
I understand that, but I'm saying not use it, just relocate it to somewhere that's being used. So the lot still complies, but we don't lose an extra five feet or six feet on the borough space there.
Uh, you just lost me.
There's a handicap space there, Dan, that, um, it's sixteen feet. It's either, uh, eight by five or eight by eight.
Okay.
So I'm saying there might be other opportunities to do some restriping of the parking lot, to move that ADA space somewhere maybe closer to the B1 or where it's still co-compliant, to open up some room there.
So basically, yeah, you would be, have a little bit of car on the public lot.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you do that, the borough would have to grant you across the east and or a licensing agreement to use those spots, which is not uncommon. We have some others, I do this work, so I know, I know where the skeletons are here. There's a couple off one hundred street, which some of those parking spaces are not fully on private property. The architects there, USA architects, and then the lodge is there. So it's not uncommon to have, and if you look at ShopRite, the same thing was gone, ShopRite, when there's parallel of the union, they're half in the borough, half on private property. I'm not saying it's a good thing, but I'm saying for one or two spaces, maybe the borough will consider this.
All right, so Mike, what, again, what you're looking for is parking not in a north-south direction, but in an east-west direction, two cars, or you still want us to pull in here with two cars?
North-south, yeah.
North-south.
I'm saying north space, north-south, that we can get eighteen feet of space.
Okay.
To get the two cars and still have a sidewalk to get to the main entrance to the gallery. It might not work, Dan, it might still, I'm trying to get away from stacking, because stacking is just not desirable. And I'm trying to get the parking spaces into the travelway out of way, away from the alley, because that alley is just not good.
Okay.
The alley is very narrow, so I'm trying to get the activity to the west.
All right, so the alley, the alley basically ends here, correct?
Yeah.
That's what you're calling the alley, and this you're calling the municipal lot.
It opens up, there's a big break there, you know, twenty-four-fourth alleyway, I mean, travelway. And you have the other ones, you could back out in a most, a safer way, it might be.
So we're going to show it that way for our next presentation?
Well, should the planning board make the recommendation, I think the first guy to see is council or entertain this. And council might say, before I entertain this, I want to see a plan. So you might be dragged, I, the council might say, we like this concept, we're going to do it without seeing all the details, or they might want the details. What I'm saying is you might have to design every little inch, Dan, for council to move the boundary line, or you may have to.
You may or may not.
Right, I think.
I have both options ready.
Right.
I have two questions, drawing attention to the colored photos. There's a dumpster. Whose dumpster is that?
That's Colin, we're going to get rid of that.
It's not. Well. It's not useful for anybody?
No.
Nobody's counting on it?
It's not any business, it's not using it or anything.
No, there, there is a, there is a, the, the, the carriage house has been used for, as we're asked for two contractors. One of the contractors, from time to time, brings a dumpster in there, he gets rid of the store, and then it goes out. But we don't propose any dumpster at all.
No, no, no.
I would suggest strongly that you call PSE&amp;G tomorrow, because that guide wire has come down, it comes straight down. It may not even be useful, it might just look like it might be useful, but it may not be useful. Seen better ones. Ask him about it, and you go, ah, we don't need that.
And move real quick.
Well, if you don't ask now, you'll be asking in day, and then, then it'll be really a long time ago.
All right, so you think that guide wire might not even be used, we can take care of that.
I was going to say.
I wouldn't do it out of fact, I would say, call PSE&amp;G and let them come out and go, what's this, do we really need this?
Dan, there was a guide wire next to the pet rumors, anybody know the pet rumors? And we were successful at being able to move it back on there.
So why are you going three different directions there, so I don't want that guide wire to.
They could do something else with it, they could set another pole further away, out of the way that could hold around the fact that it's, yeah, that's one thing.
Uh, so, let's see, I put these back up again. I just want to be absolutely clear. If there are anything, if there's anything that we need to change, or you're not in favor of, uh, we're certainly going to listen to it and make those changes before we come in front of the planning board.
Right, right, the council.
All right, at this point, I'll open it up to the public for questions and comments. Hearing a public comment will close the public session. I think you're on the right track, Ellis.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, hearing application.
Thank you. I'm sure you all want to stay for the rest of the year. Okay, I'd like to move on to resolutions. First one, amending resolution twenty seventeen, zero, zero, seventeen. We discussed this at a prior meeting, and now it's time to renew that.
I have a question. We've got additional information about a strong disagreement from the recreation department about what was deciphered, and it seemed to be very not in favor. Favor, yes, the letter I read from, indirectly from Kathy, from the, from the recreation department. They were, they hammered it on the ADA issue, slide, the groundwork. I'm wondering, well, how, what do, what do we have to do with this? Since the council made a decision to not ask us, what do we think?
I don't think we do anything. I think that part of the goal here is to set it up so that the applicant can meet the conditions of the main buildings and get a CO. And, I mean, that's the goal, they need to get permanent financing, they need to do a lot of stuff. And, and this has been a dispute with this, have been holding up everything all along. And, and the buildings are done, I think whatever issues remain there are relatively minor, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, I have a punch list that I think the developer's working on.
Okay.
And the fire marshal's issues are taken care of.
The fines page, he says that he has inspection on Friday to look at, to see if the violations were addressed. And then he's got some striping in, I don't know if you saw the letter, striping and fire hydrant work that has to go. But to me, it's not a heavy lift, back to the justice.
Right, and, and striping, I don't know if striping can be done in this weather or not, but, um, certainly possible for a bond to be posted for that to happen in order to get a CO. And I think that's the goal here. We've got two nice buildings on a lot in a project area that, that was desperately in need of help.
There's no question about any of that, but they agreed to something.
Right.
And then the council said, huh.
Well, no, I think the council reviewed it, but.
And said, huh, they read, they.
They reviewed it in concept, and then I did the, I looked into the hood, it's not code compliant, so it has to be changed, but they, the council kept their concept. So.
So our holdover then is having this bond, to make sure that everything gets finished, including the playground area. Is that what you're hearing?
Well, that's the suggestion I made, is we could roll my punch list in with the bonds. But I was talking to Carrot, that's great, but until playground is code compliant, you're not going to get that bond anytime soon. Unless they move quickly, because that playground needs to be revised.
That's, that's the new problem. So originally, we were looking at this and said, okay, we need to figure out how to get the playground essentially approved by council as it is, and make sure that it's going to be built while at the same time allowing the CO to be issued. And trying to go to two separate tracks. The problem that, the way I'm understanding it is, there are some punch list items that need to be done that are associated with the original approval, but they don't seem to be that heavy of a lift and they can be dealt with pretty simply. However, the design that was presented to the council might be saying is not code compliant, meaning then it's difficult to establish, or have the applicant establish the amount of what the bond should be for us to then collect one and a half times that amount to ensure that it's going.
Right, so.
So that's the concern, and, and what, what I'm trying to achieve right now is, is allow it to, allow the developer to be able to do what they need to do to get their CO. We're thinking about a phase-in process, thinking about taking the condition out of being a CO condition and have it be a post-CEO condition, so we can resolve these issues simultaneously while allowing them to get the CO, because we're not tying the two in together. But if, if the borough's going to have to deal with that issue, that's something, I mean, that's way above my pay grade, but that's, that's an issue, that if it's not, if it's code compliant, it's nothing, if it's not, then it's nothing.
So I, I just have a, a question on it. So the council approved conceptually plan.
Just the concept.
Here, here, here's a picture of it, uh, if, if, and I can't vote on this, so, because I didn't do the original resolution, I wasn't here for that. So I can't vote, but my question is, is that if you, if you vote to separate it and give a CO and take the, the playground, the council has approved it in, in concept, then who actually approves the final design then? Does that go back to council?
Well, that's the problem, is you just want to make sure they were, when separate, the borough, planning board separates this and say, okay, upon issuance of a performance guarantee and CO. I'm saying the way we're going, that performance guarantee might not be issued for a while, something needs to be changing here because the plan doesn't work, the playground doesn't work.
Correct, and that's what I'm saying.
But he's asking who would do the final approval on that playground.
So, so, and I'm just going to pick on, uh, the council that's sitting here.
So we have the option of saying.
He approved a plan, you know, that was said, hey, this, this is code compliant, do you guys like this plan? He said, yes. He say, okay, or the planning board says, okay, you know, we're going to separate it. They have to redo this plan that they already solved and say, yes, that plan's going to change.
Yes.
We just took it out and said, you don't need a CO, you know, you don't need it for your CO anymore. Because it go back to council to approve the final plan with all those modifications to make it compliant? What does that come to this board?
I would assume, I'm not an attorney, I would assume it comes back to the council, because the property, the playground will be heated to us upon completion.
Yeah, it would be nice.
It'll be publicly on property.
But not so that it's completion.
And we will have, we will have to ensure it, and to get insurance on it, it's, it's obviously got to be circumstances.
And who would typically do the review from a, a code compliance perspective on behalf of the borough?
What engineer is going to look at it and say, is it compliant?
Because the borough, the borough council could look at the concept and say, we like that, if we don't like this, but then it needs to be reviewed in that next, next step to determine compliance. Who would do that on behalf of borough, typically?
Well, here's the, here's the rough.
Can get our planner engineer, we may have to.
If he's a person conveying this over to the borough, the argument is developers should be paying for these reviews, not the borough.
Right.
So in that gist, then it would be the planning board, whoever we look at it. So I, I would say that what the mayor says, I would, I would be reviewing it.
Out of escrow.
Out of escrow, like we've normally done. When it's compliant, that's why I think in one of my staff, or one of my big submittals, you saw that the engineer's estimate, we had a place hitting for the playground. It has to be inspected, that's the other thing, it hasn't been discussed. What normally happens is it gets designed, it gets approved, it's code compliant. Is the borough happy with it? Borough happy with it, okay. Then you go to construction, you inspect it, and when everything's done, at some point, when the land ownership, the driveways dealt with, the whole thing gets conveyed over to the borough, and then the borough would maintain it and operate it, like any other park. So.
Why is this so different? I don't, I'm confused at this point as to why, respectfully, why it would have to go back to council. If normal processes, this board holds that review and final okay.
I don't think it does, but it's, borough is going to be, uh, the conveyee is the borough. So the borough has to accept this, right?
But why couldn't that be, once it's, we've gotten it?
Because the council jumped ahead, the council went and said, we're gonna, we're gonna approve this instead of this board doing it.
I know, but I'm talking now, like, if, if we're going to separate it, can't we make that?
Well, what we could do is get the plan right, get all right, get the planning board to endorse that and recommend the council adopt.
That's what I'm asking, that's the normal process, right, in any other application.
We would, I would, we would ask this out.
I want to get back to something. What this resolution does is it separates the two pieces of property, the building from the, the playground.
Well, not, not really.
I don't want that to work enough, because we're going to love it. What, what, what we were doing with this resolution, and what we talked about at the last meeting, when we talked about amending the condition, the original condition, number thirteen, said, "The Borough Council and the Borough Parks Commission shall review and approve the proposed park development in connection with the project." Because where the project came before this board, the park was an idea. It was, we're going to put a park here, we don't have details, we don't have anything. So the board, in order to approve the project, left the details of the park to the Borough Council and the Parks Commission to approve. Then, I don't know what happened throughout that process, ultimately, the proposed park went to the council and got approved, in theory, in concept, without apparently being looked at and confirmed that it was code compliant, safety compliant, whatever it was that was referenced in this report. And now we're stuck at a crossroads, because it's that issue that's preventing the resolution compliance overall, and preventing the developer from getting the CO for the residential units and transferring, and doing whatever it needs to do, whatever, it doesn't matter, it's preventing that issue from being resolved. So, I was trying to figure out a way to separate the two, so that they can happen simultaneously. The board talked about leaving the, I'll say jurisdiction, but leaving the review in the hands of the council, since they've already looked at the park and approved it, understanding that there's some code issues that would prevent it from being developed that way, but we were hoping that the bond was going to be sufficient then to en, ensure construction and ensure compliance. But now what I'm understanding is, it's difficult to ensure with that 1.5 times the construction cost bond amount is, because the current, we're going like this, the current concept doesn't have.
We need a real plan.
Code compliant, that's what we need.
So, so how can we separate that aspect of it and allow the remaining aspect to continue while all this is worked out, because, because it's not.
And we make it a position for the CO, and we, let's say, let's see, separate.
And that's exactly where I was thinking.
And add one extra thing to the resolution that they have to come before, so it's code compliant. Or an actual compliant, or, we won't know if compliant, an actual site plan, an actual plan of what it is that can be reviewed. And then, doesn't have to be built, then you, then you have a dollar amount that we can move forward on, and you can still separate where they can get their CO, and we can then continue to work on the playground.
Yeah, but how do you ensure?
We're giving up our leverage.
That's where the bond would come in, because now you have something more than a concept.
You're not going to have a bond until after the issuance of the CO.
What she may be saying is, I'm wrong. A man that conditions indicate that the park and the resolution of the bond and the resolution of the concept is no longer a resolution condition for the CO, it's a post-CEO condition, and they have to come back before this board, but.
What's going to hold this?
Let's just be to the file, or this is.
Well, that's what I was saying, is adding it into, in order to get that CO, making it a condition for the CO, is the part that's.
That's what it is now.
No, but only the, the remaining part that's not there is another plan coming before this board that we approve.
They would have to do that anyway.
Then we would approve the conditions of, A, even if there's still punch list items, hey, we've got something we're going to approve, and at, at that point, can begin that process of, now we know what to bond on, and then they can continue, it, then, so you, you can't stop it now, we have to come back with another, I know you're looking at me like I'm totally nuts.
I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
She's making it a condition of the CO, they come in with a proper plan that maybe. Just add this one condition of the CO that's not there now, and then we can separate, because then they can move this way with the CO, and we can go this way, knowing what the bond amount would have to be, knowing what we're looking at, and then, that, at that point, the bond is the, you know, whether it's built or not, we've got the bond money.
Right, I understand, but, but that's what the chairman was saying, but what I'm bringing out is great, but that might happen for weeks or months, because you're not going to get the CO for the apartment buildings until the bond is issued for the park, for the playground.
How about they have the condition?
Right, no.
See, that's the problem, we're trying to get the CO up and running. Yeah, I'm trying, that's delaying, that's delaying the CO. Even coming back before, even saying, just come before us with a plan so that we can. Do you understand, we have conditions on the CO with the additional CO.
You can't, because you can't rescind it on, the CO says everything's done.
Yeah, so you can't say.
So the problem is, you have two things, it's not, it's great, I understand the need for the CO for the buildings, but what's they, what, what makes them build a park?
Yeah, we both have something to say, but.
I don't trust him.
There's, there's another legal aspect of this, which no one has addressed. The park is also mentioned in the redevelopment agreement, and if the park is not built, they will never be deemed complete legally by a redevelopment agreement, which means that they're always locked in to being in some void. That they, they all, at the end of a project, after the COs are issued and all the money is sorted out, there's a clause in the redevelopment agreement that says they will be deemed complete. It's got nothing to do with planning, it's got nothing to do with engineering.
So what does that?
It doesn't have to do with money. So what's the penalty if they're not deemed complete?
Yeah, well, what happens if they're not deemed?
It costs, it costs them financially, and I, I, I can't.
But I'm saying, there is some kind of.
But they're, they're getting their, they're getting their CO financed, they get their finance, their permanent financing when they get their CO. And not, not when, not when, not when the town says they're redeveloping.
Yeah, but what's, no, I'm not going to get into the argument, because you and I have had it so often, it makes me want to throw up. So, I'm not going there. But what I'm saying is, we have a hook, if they're not deemed complete, one, their bank will beat them up, two, they can't sell the project if they wanted to. It, it, it's a substantial cost.
Long-term non-compliant, why don't we just hold our feet to a fire now?
Because I don't know what they will do, to be honest. They, they claim, and I, I'm not going to go on a rant here, I promise.
No, no, I got you.
They claim that they have been, I'll make it as, led by the nose for over two years with no resolution, and they have spent a lot of money, and they're not happy. And this is where in discussion with the chairman, the mayor, and with Kara, we said, okay, can we get them to CO so they're not paying through the nose interest on money? Because they're running into fault of their bank right now, so we're not the most popular people with this.
So, one, one quick question, we still have, forget, let's, let's, let's put the park aside, we have fines and other things that haven't been.
They've paid the fines.
Right, but they, but they still need another, they still need, there's still another inspection that's coming up on Friday, there's a whole bunch, there, there's a.
As built.
Just a bunch of things on this punch list that are also not being completed, so to say that it's us holding them up for the park.
Thank you.
Is, is kind of hard to understand, and just, the other thing is, I don't, and this, I guess, frustrates me, being council member on, on the board now, the park came to us and was told that it was in compliance, and that all of the, all of the things that need to happen.
State regulations.
It meant everything, and now.
Well, I, I can't even answer that, Roger, because when I presented the concept to the council.
Correct.
If, I was guaranteed by their engineer that it was compliant with state rules. So what Mike's saying, I have no idea what he said. I haven't taken the time to look into it, but I, it's something that needs to be resolved, but I don't lie to council.
I'm not saying.
No, we're not saying.
No, but I mean, that, that is the innuendo that's going around right now, that it's not compliant. And yet they came to us and said, this complies, and it's in writing on their drawing.
Well, but there's.
With New Jersey state code.
Right, but code for what, the equipment?
For playgrounds.
Well, there's different parts of the playground, there's the equipment itself, there's the padding, there's the fencing that goes around it, there's the access, ADA access.
Yeah, but I mean, Deidre, stop getting into the weeds, they said the whole concept that they presented complies with state code.
But that's, that's what I'm saying, is that, what, what they were saying was state code might have just been for the equipment.
But it wasn't, they listed it all on a drawing that I circulated, that listed all the appropriate state codes.
Well, the Recreation Department sent a letter pretty much saying that it was not ADA compliant, that there was an issue, there was a question about it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not following you down that rabbit hole right now.
Okay, but, but what, what I don't understand, where is the rabbit hole? Is it ADA compliant or not? That's the first question, that's the first thing I read, was that it's not ADA compliant.
I can't answer that, well, I can answer it, it's not ADA, it's not still compliant.
That would be the first problem, and they say it's okay. That's like saying, I say it's okay, I don't want to get out, it's ridiculous, I don't have any thought.
No, look, let's not go there, because, no, I.
But that's where we are, we're not going anywhere, we're here, and the whole reason why we're here is because they say it's not.
There are conflicting stories going on here.
And we have to get it straightened out.
And, and my story is mine, Mike Cole is the engineer, I've been in contact with so many people that I don't know what to say or how to address it. I can only tell you legally what the redevelopment agreement says, which is a significant hook, right? If you don't accept that, well, I can't really address that either.
Again, aside from the park, we still have a lot of things that have to take place that haven't been addressed.
No, I, I disagree with you somewhat there, Roger, that they, they may or may not have been delinquent in following things, because those fire violations date from two thousand and nineteen, if I read the, the paperwork correctly. What they hadn't done is paid the fines. Now, Bobby Lynn's going out there sometime this week to make sure that everything was resolved.
Friday, yes.
And I think we, and I think we have to look at this as if those are going to be resolved, because they are in the hands of the developer, they can very easily, if they want to move forward, go ahead, get the inspections done, pay the fines, do whatever it is, I think it's a, that's definitely an issue.
The question is, in that time, can they come up with a plan that complies?
Right.
And that's what I, and we just get them, in that timeframe, add that little thing in, like Dujur said, and then that's part of that CO. And if they do that, then we know it's ADA compliant, and we can move forward by several.
Is the, is the park by the YNTA ADA compliant?
Hundred percent.
Absolutely. Is the park over at John Moon?
They all are, because they wouldn't get money if you didn't.
And by, and by Park Avenue, they're all ADA compliant.
The ones we're putting in town that we've applied for grants for, everything we put in has to be ADA compliant.
So the one at the YNTA, which was installed maybe like four or five years ago, the one that destroyed.
Yeah, but we need to do.
How much was that?
All, all in?
Yeah.
With, and adding and everything?
Yeah.
Two hundred and eleven thousand.
To do all that?
Yeah, and I did the design, I did the design on that.
So, and again, I just, I, I designed playgrounds, and, and I don't want, me and Colin have had many arguments about it, many discussions, um, the council approved the concept of it, I don't want to go through the details of that again. My, my issue with what we're trying to do here is that I don't believe, and again, I can't vote, so just making that clear, I can't vote, um, that we're, we're rushing so that they can get their CO, so they can get their final financing, based on the concept, as, you know, Roger was just saying, that we are the ones who have been holding them up over everything. So, I went back and Recreation has not had another plan shown to them for over a year, it was December of two, of last year, it was the last communication of any conceptual plan.
Yeah.
So.
That's mine, too.
And, 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 and I put in an open request, I can have it all, because I, I'm not happy with different aspects of it. I don't understand why we, as a planning board, are rushing to get somebody financing, as, as the councilman said, when they're, they're not done, so we're not holding them up. If this was any other project, and it wasn't, and, and I understand the playground is being deeded over to the, the town, it's not a safety concern of their building and their residents, so, so I'm okay with that. But we would never say like, oh, well, you don't have a portion of X, Y, Z done, so we'll figure it out later and, and move forward. I, I don't see why we're rushing to, to separate it for that, that's my opinion, I wasn't here for the original one.
But we already voted, and basically said that's what we want to do, now we found another glitch, we're trying to come, overcome that glitch.
And I think it's a little different with the fact that this is a park for the borough that's being deeded to the borough, the little, you know, take away the issues that need to be resolved.
I like the idea that Lisa had of getting a plan, and that's all I'm saying, I don't think we should be rushing to, to approve this, you guys.
As is face value, right?
That, that's my only comment on it, I can't vote, I wasn't the original resolution.
I only have one question. We approved back in, in December that the park had to be constructed by April first, twenty twenty four, with Mike's notes here.
Mm-hmm.
What happens if it's not constructed by April first, twenty twenty four? Because we, we talked about the timeframe, how long we're going to let them carry on, and we agreed on, I think it was like eighteen months or something?
Yeah.
It ended up being eighteen months, so April first, twenty twenty four.
Take their bond money.
The bond, the bond.
If you take their bond money, they lose the 1.5% that they paid for the bond, they can move on.
Yep.
And, and the town tries to build, tries to build their own, which costs, and that's why we're using 1.5.
So can we use?
So can they hold that over the borough's head? That if, not over their head, but, you know, well, we're not going to build a park, and we're not getting CO, this is telling them they have to have the park built by April first, twenty twenty four? Or we just go into a vicious circle?
So, just describe it one second, Roger, that was a vote that has yet to be memorialized by resolution.
Yeah, so that's what's in here right now.
That's what's trying to do right now, but in the interim, we have learned with that concept.
We have a glitch that we don't know how to bond it, because we don't know what's going to.
Exactly.
That's the one and a half.
So, I'm, I'm saying, the reason you do one and a half is because it's, it's educated guessing on costs. So can't we take their conceptual plan and make it, and just make an educated guess on that and double it or something, to make, give it a little bit of leeway, and then have that the bond number?
We can, but we're starting from a plan that doesn't comply, so we're not.
But that's what I'm saying, that's why we're doubling, that's why we're doubling the bond, so within the double amount, we can, the walkways and whatever are needed.
Should you say you want to bond for a half a million instead of?
Yeah, we just make the bond bigger.
Big enough to cover the compliance to the thing, but use the conceptual plan as the basis of, of beginning and double it instead of one and a half times, and that way, everybody can move forward, and, and they are, now we have something to hold over them, which is money, which in the end, it's all that matters.
So they have the posted bond, right?
Right. And I don't know if we can do that past for the MLUL, which is 120%, if you use the MLUL, and you have to.
Even if they agree to it as a condition of the CO?
I think they could agree to it, but we have to discuss that with them.
The language doesn't help, the mystical language will also say, you can only bond to 120% of the services, and you have to have something to bond, being an actual plan, because that's what the bonding company is going to come in and say, okay, I'm bonding this, if it doesn't get built, I'm going to do it. In this case, we don't have something to bond, we have a concept which, back to what Lisa says, if we get a plan that works, then we can bond it.
And bond it.
Right.
I don't, I mean, I'm not trying to delay even more, but I think it's the only way that we can satisfy the fact that we have a conceptual plan that could potentially be non-compliant, and at the same time, it doesn't take that long to put a drawing together, get somebody to draw, I mean, you're not talking eight, ten months, another year.
The only thing that doesn't mean is the ADA compliance, which means changing.
No, it's not, I mean, that's the layout.
No.
Can't put the two and five-year-olds next to the five and twelves, the actual layout doesn't comply. And then we have the issue of the hard surface in that crazy border that doesn't comply, if you assume it's a hard surface, you'd be the same rate. It's not a heavy lift, it's a small lot. I don't find any of this to be very time-consuming, but yet, we're here two years later. So, you know, get a plan that complies and get this through the process, I, I think it's only a couple of weeks personally, but they have.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing, just hire somebody to fix it, you know, have your architect or your landscape designer fix it, and then send us one that actually complies.
And that was Cassie Rose, and that is a punch list, should be able to get addressed in the next couple of weeks. I don't see the punch list, these items, with the exception of the transit debris, I think that can be resolved, but I don't know where, what the applicant's going to say on that.
So, there was a vote, what, what meeting was that?
December.
Yeah.
December.
December.
December fourteenth.
Okay, so in December, this board voted on the provisions that are contained in the modified, what was it, item thirteen?
Correct.
So, based on tonight's discussion, where do we go? Do we memorialize what we said, we've already voted on it, do we memorialize that and move on from there?
Now, I think you table it till this is all resolved.
E. We reference an approved design by council that has been presented to and approved by council. And if that, if we know or if there's a question as to whether or not that approved design can be built and is code compliant, we're again, we're back to that same.
Right.
We're it's a guess twenty two.
If you might look at six, after, you know, the park does not appear to be complete, you know, six is not factually accurate.
I saw you change it.
Right, uh, not eight I had comments on. I mean, back to what Lisa says, the cleanest way to do this, get the plan in here, get it approved.
So so hold on. Condition thirteen, we revise to say, the design of the park shall be subject to the review and approval of Borough Council. So presumably with that language, it could be represented to Borough Council and reviewed for code compliance.
No, I think I think when the Borough Council approved, that's they were under the impression that that's the best standard.
Agreed. Well, again, no offense, but presumably, because we definitely have a difference of opinion from what was told the council based upon their experts and what Mike said, so again, I have no idea.
Wow, if you look in that report, I quote.
Is there a report something?
Yeah, no, I I'm not, I'm not second, I think, that's what I'm saying, I think this sort of, their testimony that it complied with all the state regulations, sort of a, was not, was a way to say that it complied, but they didn't really look at it to make sure it complied with all regulations throughout. And that's the difference, is, you know, there's national regulations, there's state regulations, there's local regulations, there's ADA. And so I just think they need to give us one that complies to all regulations for that site, and they have not done that.
Yeah, but what we're saying is that they need to.
Yeah, so I think we need to word it sort of that way, where, you know, it's to comply to all regulations.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out, how do we, how do we change this.
Well, I I had suggestions there. My markup of it.
If it's presented back to council.
Yeah.
Or approved.
You just changed, you just changed design to concept.
Uh, item six, I just took out altogether.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, I'm talking about the revision of the condition itself. Because again, the punch list items.
Item nine, I changed.
Yep, I saw that.
And then I had questions about the conflict engineer in there.
But just looking at, if we just focus on the language of thirteen and the presentation of it to the borough, and that was one of the things I know we did talk about because we talked about doing put in there that the plan has been presented to and approved by as retroactive, and I said, no, let's keep the condition as something that needs to be satisfied, so.
And it does not satisfy.
So it gives us the ability to, or gives the developer the ability to go back and do that to the council, whereby the council can then ask that additional question of these issues.
Can we add in here certain, so condition required with the Borough Council, Borough Parks Commission review and approval of the park, proposed park development in connection with the project. Um, in there, can we put cite certain codes to ensure that whatever ADA or whatever compliance we're looking for, everybody's on the same page? So can we just add in one detail of what we expect to be considered to be compliant?
Okay.
The report refers to public playgrounds, state handbook.
Right.
But that's what I'm saying, can we just add that in there and then not guarantee that?
Yeah, very specific is the way we wanted to do that.
They're saying, yes, this will meet this or won't, whatever. But again, it it is now citing specifically, not just saying meets state code, it meets specifically what we're calling out in addition to a general term of state regulation, state code.
I don't see why we can't reference.
Michael's comments.
Local.
Yeah, I mean, comments.
Yeah, I mean, Michael basically commented on all the things they weren't compliant with.
Yeah.
And it should be, it should be all state and local. And local, but ADA is national, so.
Well, that's, that's, I saw in here back from the applicant for Boulder. I mean, they're proposing the mulch, which is interior wood fiber, which I I think it needs to meet the same standard, but the code says that it's gonna settle three or four inches, so doesn't need the code until after it settles.
And see, those are the types of things that I'm gonna continue to.
And that's why I'm trying to get the planning board to give a comment on this to say, that's why I put this review together.
But there was a huge argument over that whole thing that there's been a proper, I remember this money argument, that's crazy with the.
Sorry.
I feel like, but wasn't that like one of the big arguments?
We wanted to say, we wanted a solid porting place safety serve.
Exactly.
And they said it was too expensive and they said no. And that's when, that was the big dispute at a year and a half ago, was that we wanted to, Recreation wanted the safety serves among other things. And the applicant said it was too expensive and they went and asked if they could do more.
Can we verbalize it to to meet the standards of other public parks in town or something to that nature? Since we know our parks are compliant?
I think, I think if we're gonna take the time to do this, I think we can go back and say that we're gonna spell out exactly what this is.
So we can spell it out.
The goal is not to have this issue come up again.
No, and no, and now.
It's all gonna be about time to say that's it.
Right, redraft it, come up with that language, and I can give you a word version of this one.
Okay. So
it's on the agenda for about some, we need some of the motion to have it.
Oh, hold on, but we don't have language yet. So either.
No, because on the existing resolution, that's listed.
You need to table the existing.
You need to table that, yeah.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, I go, I go, we're done.
Yeah, almost like we table the existing resolution.
Let's make sure though, have we discussed this to the point where I can go back and I could put a resolution together? Because again, we don't want to have this exact same conversation next time. Is there anything else that we want to deal with? That next resolution that should be presented should be acceptable to everybody and.
Okay, so let me just, just to clarify, what will happen is it goes to them, they have to do a plan that meets regulations, the plan comes to Borough Hall, one of our code people look at it.
No, I'm not, I'll be there.
You're, you're gonna, okay, our engineer is gonna look at it, engineer plan is gonna look at it, and then say to the council, everything's okay, and then the council will officially approve it, is that what's gonna happen?
We won't come back here?
It doesn't come back here.
The plan gets revised, I do a report, the report goes out, if there's an issue, which there might be an issue on the mulch, either the planning board weighs in a per dozen, goes right to the council, or the planning board says, we agree with this, we disagree with this.
Or do, just, I I'm wondering if the planning board needs to be involved, that's my thing.
If it's, if it's. If if we do this, I don't think we do.
Correct, I think that's why, I think that's, we're done, and so.
We spell it out exactly, and if you're the point, then we should not see it because we're saying what the expectation should be, no questions asked, there shouldn't be any questions.
And if the council has questions, they can ask Mike or whatever, but.
Well, I I wrote a review on it, and then if Recreation wants to review and council gets to.
And our council liaison.
But Recreation was taken out of this, this resolution. We're amending it to take Recreation out and make them not.
Yeah, that we are.
Yes, that that's what, that's what this did as well.
But that's what, that's what our council liaisons are for, they've heard this whole discussion, it goes to them. You guys know what's gonna be coming down.
Well, if it's a public park, why is Recreation not chiming in on us?
Because we didn't like it and they didn't want to get it.
Yeah, but it's being, being.
Let's have a backwards.
No, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, I hear you, I know, we're gonna be here till eleven o'clock trying to come up with a voting.
And and I think there needs to be language in there, we're talking about strict compliance. Something, something along those lines, where if it says you have to do A, B, and C, even if C could morph into D and E, if it says A, B, and C, you do A, B, and C. May not like it, may not be happy with it, may not be the best thing, but compliance exactly with what it is. And I think that's the only way there's gonna be any sort of.
And you know, in the end, the overall intent of the planning board, when we saw it for the first time, was to have a great playground for that area.
Yeah.
So I think we have to think about what was our original intent of what we wanted. And I think we're getting so mixed up and so focused on some of these details that we're forgetting that this is supposed to be for the residents there, and we don't want to stop that from being built. But we also want to make sure that it is built.
Yeah.
And it's built correctly into code.
Yeah.
And then you have to address inspections in there.
Of the playground or of the buildings?
Playground.
Oh, okay.
But I give back to the fact that what we're trying to do is separate the building, the COs for the building from the playground.
And and we're saying you can't do that unless you have a plan that is, that at least it complies, not concept plan.
So we can incorporate that as well.
That's to be a real, our design.
We incorporate that as well, just, so what this essentially will do is put a plan together that can be code compliant, that will result in an accurate or as close to accurate estimate of the performance bond amount that can then be a hundred and twenty percent, not a hundred and fifty percent, that they can provide, segregate that out as a post-CO condition,
huh?
uh, constructed by April first, otherwise we pull the box.
Why are we going down to one twenty?
Because that, it leads with the municipal code, we're not gonna push them.
Unless we can get an approval or or authorization, yeah.
Just my my answer to that was that private company building something is a lot cheaper than.
I agree.
That was my only thing, so if they, if they say, no, we're not building here, take your three hundred grand, you know, whatever, don't know this.
And don't go on camera.
If that's what we're stuck with doing, if they don't agree.
And then are we gonna incorporate the punch list land or whatever, we make these slots and that gets resolved in the next two, three weeks?
Well, that's, that they can enter CO without a contract anyway.
Well, that's what I mean, that's already a condition of the CO.
So, whereas, I think they're too separate for this, because they can't, that's not getting CO.
I would, I would. Okay, I can't, I can't, you're in.
So to his point, if that CO is not happening, if those punch list items don't happen anyway, so to have to put that in here is kind of a redundancy, right? Because they can't get it out.
I understand, it's the position.
Does everyone agree that it's the conditions of going, again, amended, we have to, we'll have to have another vote, we'll have to go through the whole process again, um, that we did last time, which is fine, it's not a problem. To segregate this out as a post-CO condition.
Yes.
So Kara, can you circulate the plan or the the modifications ahead of time so that?
I'll circulate that by Monday, Monday, Tuesday.
So we don't have to through another discussion around and around.
And I'll reach out the motion, maybe this plan can redesign, redesign in two weeks. I don't see why not.
I don't see.
It's a small area, I don't get this.
It's not your playground.
It may be better if I reach out, Mike.
I already contacted them.
Mike?
What?
I give something to suggest.
And I said, oh.
And I am making a very strong suggestion, it may be better if I do.
You can, they're already contacting me about, Alan, you can certainly reach out, thank you.
Okay, your motion is second to table this pending further modifications. Ours in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
I have to abstain.
Okay. We are trying to revitalize the resolution, so Roger should. I think the next time we have something with, in front of us like this, we're gonna do it differently. And we say, you'll make a contribution, you donate the property, you'll make a contribution and let the borough deal with it.
We'll have a plan submitted with the provisional plan, because if you have that, then there's no.
Right.
And then it's just.
Right, but they didn't have that. And that's why we're having discussions.
Well, and also was that it they sort of, it went only to council, we never saw it, was the other problem.
Yeah, the problem, the problem is that it ended up getting way into the weeds on a lot of different issues. And that wasn't our intent, our intent was
to have a park.
to see the playground though. And I think that it's a, it's a question of noble deed goes unpunished. It's, it's just a matter of their intentions were good, our intentions were good, and we got caught in that quagmire, so we try to keep that in mind for the future.
Treat it as a learning experience.
Sure is.
Yeah.
Okay, next up, we have a resolution for Pioneer Solar.
So move it, second.
Any other discussion?
Who wants a second?
Al.
Al.
Okay, we'll hold you.
Chairman Nevada?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Brun?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Craska?
Yes.
Mr. Karsis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Okay, last one we have is author's, uh, resolution authorizing the order of non-fair and open contract to C H A to serve as twenty twenty-three conflict planning board in New York.
I'll move that, second.
Just a quick, um, before we, um, while I'm in favor, I just wanted to note since I did for you guys, um, they did have a slight increase, so a few bucks per, uh, per hour, per person, but it's nothing. Two twenty-five to two thirty, one ninety to two oh five, and one sixty-five to one eighty, so. While I'm in favor, I just wanted to make sure it was on the record that Karen, Mike did not increase their fees.
It's about pass the inflation rate.
All right, I'll, I'm completely in favor of of pass, I just wanted, you know, so that we're.
So we're on, it's on the record, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, still moving.
Okay.
Chairman Nevada?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Brun?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Craska?
Yes.
Mr. Karsis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Okay. I have just a few things, which I planned on the last meeting. Oh, yeah, you're gonna have an A R P.
It's an option?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on your revised agenda.
Right, I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
Chairman Nevada?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Brun?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Craska?
Yes.
Mr. Karsis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Okay. Real quick, um, I mentioned last year that I wanted to get uh, a team together to review the sidewalk cafe ordinance, and I think that we need to get that going this year. So, um, think about it, and at the next meeting, I will ask for some volunteers to sit in that committee. I can't even read my own writing. Oh, the D S A is proposing streets, street scape changes, and I think it's appropriate for the planning board to participate in that. So I would like a volunteer to go to the D S A meetings when the street scape is being discussed, so that not only can you report back to us, but also comment on some of the things that that we've discussed this.
Do you know when they meet?
I don't know, but I can find out.
They're doing special meetings for it, I'm I'm happy to volunteer for that, I've been meeting with them on it from the O E M side too, so. I'm I'm meeting with them.
I think, yeah, I think their regular meeting is the second Monday.
Eric St. Peter asked me to attend, I don't know, one or many of those meetings over the weekend. So I guess I'm gonna get sucked into my record.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Never.
And the other thing we're gonna have to deal with this year is we have a couple of proposals for the E C P D down near the, down near Park Avenue and down in the Brook, and so we may need to modify the redevelopment plan for that to enable some of this to happen. Right now, there's just concept plans, so it'll go to the redevelopment committee first, and then it'll come here probably as a concept and then as a full application, so. That's what we have coming up, folks. At this time, I will open the meeting up to the public for comment on anything. During the public comment, we'll close the public session. So your motion to adjourn.
Really quick.
Are we going to go to the second?
We are active.
I was gonna say. I still can hear you all talking.
Well, I'm moving, we adjourn and go into executive session.
And are we coming back, we're not making any action?
So I need a motion in second to go into executive session. The purpose of executive session is to discuss potential litigation involving fiduciary matter. Uh, we will not be coming back to, uh, open session, and we will not make any, uh, vote to take any action during executive session.
All right, we'll set. All right, no second. Need to roll, I think.
Chairman Nevada?
Yes.
Ms. Rosensky?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Run?
Yes.
Ms. Adair?
Yes.
Mr. Craska?
Yes.
Mr. Karsis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland?
Yes.
Ms. Warner?
Yes.
Okay. I hope.
Yes.
We have a reason. Kara, who's?